So my name is Garrett Jackson, as was stated previously, and I'm here to provide an overview of the vision, goals, and policies of the Comprehensive Plan. Just very briefly for those at home, what is the Comprehensive Plan? It is the 20-year development plan for the city of Bremerton. So how the city plans to implement housing, environmental concerns, transportation, city services, and more. So all of that is in this aspirational document of the Comprehensive Plan. For the purpose of conversation tonight, this is an additional opportunity for public engagement. So we're looking for input for the Planning Commission to consider their final recommendation for the Comprehensive Plan that will be delivered later to the City Council. So this is just a check-in with the City Council to make sure that we're headed in the direction that you approve of. There's a little infographic up on the screen that just shows that the Planning Commission has been working on the Comprehensive Plan in 2023. We're having this check-in today with the City Council. It will go back to the Planning Commission to continue that work in 2024, which will later be delivered to the Council for additional review and eventual adoption. This is another portion of outreach to the city of Bremerton. We have done extensive outreach. You can look at that on our website, bremerton2044.com. That includes the draft policy documents for vision goals and policies of each element, important documents, and important upcoming dates. The Planning Commission will continue this work generally on the fourth Monday of every month. This month, because there's a holiday, it skips to the 26th. So we look forward to anyone looking to participate at the Planning Commission meeting. We have gone to a bevy of public events over the years, starting in about July of 2022 onward to just this month at a district town hall in District 4. And as a bit of carrot and stick, if you enter a comment into the city of Bremerton, you send that email, that comment to compplan@ci.bremerton.us. You are entered into a monthly drawing to win a cup. So this is our Comprehensive Plan Yeti Tumblr, which please enter your comments and be eligible to win one of these attractive cups. Getting into the jurisdictional authority, so what boxes do we need to make sure that get checked to ensure compliance with state and other planning bodies? First and foremost, it's the Growth Management Act for the state. The Department of Commerce issues guidance to the city of Bremerton and all jurisdictions within Washington on how to implement comprehensive plans. We then plan regionally with the Puget Sound Regional Council. That's King County, Snohomish County, Pierce County, and Kitsap. We are all in the same region. You can't plan in a vacuum. We make sure that our plans are compatible with one another through the vision goals and policies of Vision 2050 through PSRC. We then plan at a more local level at KRCC, Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council, and those are all jurisdictions within Kitsap County. They band together to form that planning body, and they come up with county-wide planning policies that we also must incorporate into our Comprehensive Plan. And lastly, it comes down to the local level with the city of Bremerton, where we show through all of our technical documents and our vision goals and policies that we can absorb the population that is forecast to come to us, to the city of Bremerton, which is substantial. By the year 2044, which is the year we're planning to, we're expecting our population to grow to just under 64,000 people and a job increase to just over 58,000 people, which is an increase in population of about 46% and jobs by 32%. We are regionally significant here at the city of Bremerton. Puget Sound Regional Council has designated the city of Bremerton as the only metropolitan city within Kitsap County. Now, that means that we not only have responsibilities to our own citizens, but we have a regional responsibility to make sure that we're meeting those yard marks for our region to do well. So our city is supposed to absorb those population and jobs, and the region is depending upon us to do that. We have two other additional designations by PSRC. One is a manufacturing and industrial center that's out by the airport, where we're supposed to have the capacity for up to 10,000 jobs. And then the downtown regional center, which is a regional center per PSRC is supposed to be absorbing the majority of population and job increases in our region downtown very significantly for that reason. So getting on to our growth strategy. In 2022, we sent a postcard out to every property owner and resident in the city of Bremerton, asking them where should this growth be located. It's coming to the city of Bremerton in 2024. Should it be located, one, in existing centers and high-density residential areas? Should it be in the low-density residential zone? Should there be a citywide increase? And resoundingly, what we heard back was growth should be located in existing centers, commercial and high-density residential areas, by the tune of about 75%. We had 25% of respondents say citywide approach, and not a single response saying that we should locate those population increases in the low-density residential zone. So this is a map that just illustrates what we'll go through here in more detail, but illustrates in these colored areas where we are proposing to change any kind of development standard or density increase in the city. So these kind of ticked concentric rings here, those are indicating a high-capacity transit station, and the transit station down at the ferry terminal carries more significance because of the connection to the ferry. So the medium-density residential zone, which is in yellow, we are proposing to raise the height from 35 to 45 feet. High-density residential from a conditionally allowed 60 feet to an outright 65 feet. General commercial from 45 feet to 65 feet. The Bay Vista Subarea Plan has a zoning designation that currently doesn't allow any residential. We're proposing to change that to mixed use. And the downtown subarea plan to increase heights to 80 feet with no maximum density. And I could have used this slide instead. So everything that I just said is encapsulated here. And going first into downtown, so why increase zoning downtown? So you'll see here on the left, the existing downtown subarea plan. There are a lot of different zones over a fairly small geographic area. And then on the right, the proposed downtown subarea plan, which aggregates a number of zones downtown into a single mixed-use zone. Right now, the development standards vary greatly across the downtown subarea plan, going from 35 feet to 80 feet to 60 feet to 40 feet to 60 feet to 80 feet to 175 feet, and then a section that has market-driven height, meaning you can build as high as you have dollars. That being said, the large pink zone that we're proposing to replace as a replacement for aggregating a single 80-foot height limit and no maximum density to encourage more population in our downtown subarea plan and more easily understood development pattern. So there's a number of reasons why we're proposing to concentrate our density increases downtown. As I mentioned earlier, the Puget Sound Regional Center has designated that we are metropolitan regional growth center, and that metro growth centers are the densest and most connected places in the region and are expected to accommodate higher levels of growth. That's per our guiding document of PSRC's Vision 2050. Our CPPs, county-wide planning policies for KRCC, indicate that growth in centers have significant regional benefits, including supporting multimodal transportation options, compact growth, housing choices near jobs, climate goals, and access to opportunity. As important focal points for investment and development, centers represent a crucial opportunity to support equitable access to affordable housing, services, health, quality transit service, and employment, as well as to build on the community assets currently present in centers. It is also already in the vision for our downtown subarea plan. So it's not a question of the vision for downtown, but the implementation that we have so far. So the downtown subarea plan currently reads that additional population will activate the area at all times of the day and achieve a vital 24-hour-a-day downtown. The primary goal will be to encourage people to linger, leave their cars behind, and explore beyond their first destination. Another reason for concentrating downtown is the existing infrastructure that is there and allowing more people to participate in this great amount of infrastructure. The Washington State ferries, Kitsap Transit ferries and buses, Naval Base Kitsap, which is our county's largest employer, Olympic College, Kitsap Regional Library, the Bremerton Marina, Three Mile Loop, and a plethora of local cultural opportunities. And that if you increase the population downtown, this infrastructure will be available to more people. Above the infrastructure investments that we already have, Kitsap Transit has identified in their long-range plan a high-capacity transit route from the Bremerton Ferry Terminal up to Silverdale. Now, high-capacity transit means that you will have a bus guaranteed to come to your station once every 15 minutes or less, and that's something that you can really develop and depend on and develop around. Also, from the Bremerton downtown transit station is proposed to have an express route to Tacoma in the future, so thereby shrinking the distance between those two jurisdictions. Why downtown social equity? As mentioned before, there's a concentrated amount of investment in downtown in infrastructure. Right now, you can do a single-family subdivision in our downtown subarea plan. There are existing single-family homes in our downtown subarea plan. Allowing for a higher capacity of population will allow more people to enjoy the county's largest employer, access to Kitsap Transit and ferries and other opportunities. That being said, too, you'll see up on the screen here, two separate apartment projects. One is a 30-unit apartment project on Warren Avenue, and the other is, I believe it's 22 apartment units over on Fifth Street. Now, these were market rate projects that were planned for market rate units, but since then, they've been purchased by community organizations that are going to be providing affordable housing to community members. So as far as equity is concerned, it's not only private development that are building these structures, you also have the opportunity later for community organizations to purchase them and then provide them as public housing. Why downtown? The Joint Compatibility Transportation Plan. So this is the joint plan between the city of Bremerton and the Navy on how we can develop compatibility between the two of us as our two separate jurisdictions continue on. And as the preferred alternative for ongoing and early actions in the JCTP, it's listed that increased density in downtown Bremerton through land use changes be one of those ongoing and early actions to ensure compatibility between our two jurisdictions. We have heard anecdotally through the Navy that we have sailors traveling from as far as Jefferson County or Tacoma to come to Bremerton to work because there isn't enough affordable housing in our city. Why downtown walkability? The graphic that you'll see up on the screen shows a walking map that shows the five-minute walk shed and a 10-minute walk shed within the downtown, and it shows how incredibly walkable our downtown is, that you can get from Evergreen Park to the county's largest employer in a very short amount of time, or Washington State ferries and Kitsap ferries and buses. And that not only helps with equity, but also with vehicle miles traveled for our climate goals. You cut down on the number of car miles traveled, and that's good for the climate. Why downtown consistency with other centers? So the Wheaton-Riddell District Center, Wheaton-Shaden District Center, Eastside Village Center, and Charleston District Center currently allow for maximum heights of 80 feet with no maximum density. And the downtown subarea plan, which is our regionally significant center, you should consider making those standards there as well. Why downtown? It's because it's where we party. All of our community festivals, for the most part, are celebrated downtown, mostly on the boardwalk, sometimes throughout downtown. If there's a shindig happening in Bremerton, it is most likely happening in our downtown subarea plan. So being able to share that with larger population is also another reason to consider. Moving on to development standards for the general commercial and high-density residential So the general commercial is located in the kind of blue turquoise that you'll see along Wheaton Way and then going more along Kitsap Way. It's typically where you'll find this zone. And the high-density residential zone, some people see brown, some people see red, some people see reddish-brown, but those typically identify existing apartment projects. So these are places that are already experiencing high density that could potentially be redeveloped for a different set of apartments in the future. So we're proposing in the general commercial zone to raise from 45 feet to 65 feet in order to take advantage of more economical construction standards. So you can build a five-over-one construction, which is a wood frame construction over a concrete podium, and that's a more economical construction standard than if you go much higher than that, like over 75, 80 feet, then you get into a high-rise, which is more steel and concrete construction, much more expensive. So if we raise our maximum height in this zone, then we should be able to providing more choices for affordable housing. High-density residential zone, we have an existing maximum height of 60 feet conditionally. We're proposing to raise that to 65 outright for the same reasons. And once again, in that postcard that we received, developing in existing high-density and commercial areas was encouraged by our population. The medium-density residential zone. So these are the areas you see on the screen in yellow, and this zone is typical to find duplex, triplex, and apartment projects existing throughout this zone at a higher rate than the remainder of the city. And so it was designated with R18 zoning to recognize those existing uses. And we are proposing to raise the height from 35 feet to 45 feet and to allow for multifamily development. Now, the existing maximum density in the medium-density residential zone is 18 dwelling units per acre. The idea behind this height increase is that you might actually be able to achieve that maximum density with a modestly higher structure height. There are currently allowed for duplexes, townhomes, cottage houses, and 280Us in the medium-density residential zone. The additional use proposed is multifamily. So additional considerations for the low-density residential. We aren't proposing any kind of development regulation increase, no height increase, no density increase for the low-density residential zone, but we are proposing to add the use of multifamily as an allowed use in the zone. And as you'll see here in this graphic, we have an example of a nearly 8,000-square-foot single-family residence in Bellevue, Washington, and then an 11-unit apartment project in the city of Bremerton that's existing down on Broadway. And the idea is equity-based, that if you are allowed today in the city of Bremerton to build a 7,000 to 8,000-square-foot home to house one family, then you should be able to build a similar-sized structure that houses more families than one. We have guidance from the Department of Commerce. So in compplans past, we have always had to demonstrate that we have the capacity to absorb a certain amount of population. With this Comprehensive Plan update, we also have to show that we have enough housing by income band, so that our zoning code allows for housing types that satisfy low-income, moderate-income, high-income residents. And this table is provided by the Department of Commerce on how you can accomplish that and the housing types that accomplish that. And I've outlined here in a red, this red box, that a low-rise multifamily building satisfies the requirements for low income between 0 and 80% of AMI. So we're following the Commerce guidance on how to provide for these income bands also through multifamily housing. So additionally, there's the social equity piece, which 47.5% per the 2020 census, 47.5% of all Bremerton residents own their home, meaning the remainder rent in the city of Bremerton. So by having policies that exclusively promote homeownership, then you're excluding a large portion of our population. And to read here, that "single-family-only zoning and other density restrictions that block development of multifamily housing in many communities thereby excludes renter households from those neighborhoods. Given that people of color are more likely to have lower incomes and to rent rather than to own their homes, the geographic concentration of rental housing helps to perpetuate patterns of racial and socioeconomic segregation." It's also for environmental stewardship reasons. So multifamily structures are inherently more efficient. You share walls, you have one foundation, you share a roof, there's efficiency in construction standards. The land use pattern requires less area. You have a more, a single-family plat requires a much larger area of land than a more compact single structure for multifamily. On average, single-family homes generate 42% more vehicle miles trip than an apartment unit. There's our two most, excuse me, the property owners that own the most residentially-zoned land in the city of Bremerton are identified here in the map, and those are heavily treed areas. So right now, we prohibit multifamily development, which will, if it's a multi, if it's a single-family plat, will end up with more removal of additional trees than if we at least allow for the multifamily. And we have this quote here from HUD that "Give people a hybrid, and they drive more. Give people a state-of-the-art home heating system, and sometimes they turn up the temperature. But there's no backsliding on land use changes if you create a more walkable area, more compact area that can't be undone." And why multifamily housing? It's already here. So it's already existing in the city of Bremerton, and the Kitsap County jurisdiction for our urban growth areas already allows for apartments outright in their code. So in our urban growth areas that will one day be annexed by the city of Bremerton, apartments are currently allowed. So it would be a more predictable development pattern if the city also permitted that type of housing structure within the city of Bremerton. Why multifamily housing homelessness? So we encourage all of our listeners to watch this video from Greg Colburn, and he explains in a very short, less than eight minutes, how the root causes of homelessness in Kitsap County that can be applied elsewhere. And after going through, whether it's drug addiction or mental health issues, the root cause that's identified in this video is lack of housing, which might seem very obvious, but in areas where housing is abundant, there are much less problems with homelessness, and that the improvements identified to make this better are to make it easier to get a permit, and that zoning allows more housing types. So yet another reason to consider. All right, getting into the vision, goals, and policies. We went into this much more in-depth in our study session. We almost put you to sleep potentially, so we'll be going through a more bridged version here. But our vision, goals, and policies are on bremerton2044.com. Anybody that wants to check them out in their entirety, please visit our webpage. There's a more pronounced discussion in this week's packet and in the Planning Commission packet for the study session at the end of last month. But we have vision, goals, and policies for housing, land use, city services, economic development, the environment, and transportation. And I'll briefly go through just the vision. So our vision for housing in the city is to encourage the growth of Bremerton by strategically locating a wide variety of housing types throughout the city in a way that protects the environment and fosters community health. This is the existing vision. We don't think that our plans conflict with that. Once again, the existing vision for land use is that Bremerton is a metropolitan city that provides for economic vitality and diverse lifestyles through a broad variety of jobs, housing, and strategically-located commercial and recreational opportunities. Our city services vision is for the city of Bremerton to strive to deliver exemplary municipal services to our community when and where it is needed. For economic development, as the only metropolitan city within Kitsap County, Bremerton expects to substantially expand employment and job variety over the next 20 years to support a growing economy and lifestyle diversity within the region. For the environment, protect Bremerton's natural environment by meeting the needs of today's citizens without compromising the needs of future generations. Transportation, Bremerton strives to promote, manage, and maintain a safe, efficient, and integrated multimodal transportation system to support a healthy and vibrant community. So we are about to provide some council feedback for potential revisions. At the study session, we asked the council for feedback. We had some ideas emailed to staff that we will be providing to council. Once again, this is not the last opportunity that the City Council will have to address vision, goals, and policies. All of this will be coming back to you for additional review later on. But these are the preliminary drafts that will be worked on more by the Planning Commission should the City Council direct them to do that. So council member comments are provided in their entirety in the packet, including staff responses to that feedback. Not all comments resulted in potential policy amendment language. And in addition to the consensus feedback received at the January 24 study session, additional revisions related to housekeeping items and larger initiatives have been identified. So staff is seeking consensus from the City Council if any of the following revisions should be worked on in more detail by the Planning Commission prior to their recommendation. So one consensus policy update that the City Council identified at the study session was to work on vacant structures. So the City Council believes that we should be doing more to address vacant structures in the city of Bremerton. This is some draft language, also included in the packet, that the Planning Commission will continue to work on. There are other housekeeping items that we're looking to the City Council to review. Most of these are to add clarity and references to existing city programs or initiatives. One topic was the maintenance of commercial development. So we had an existing policy that called out to encourage upgrades, to encourage rehabilitation, but it left out the word maintenance. So in the revised language, you can see underlined there "and maintenance," so encourage upgrades, rehabilitation, and maintenance of existing commercial developments. Main Street Association is already an association that the city has adopted through our downtown business association. It was recommended that the Main Street Association be added specifically to the economic development element, just calling it out as reference. So of the pursuing legislation and programs to aid business districts, adding in the Main Street Association with those existing programs. For the city services element, the topic would be active transportation. So there was a couple of comments about, you know, transit, walking, and bicycle. How do you, how do we fit that into the plan in a more coherent way? And adding an active transportation plan to cover those bases is what we're proposing to make sure that everybody's on the same sheet of music. So in the next two policy changes, we add that active transportation plan design into the language, both in the city services element, once again, just adding in the reference to the active transportation plan. The next topic of interest was increased lighting in city parks. So the comment was, we believe for So, the comment was, we believe for increased safety in city parks, to have lighting on later, we took that as an endorsement potentially of crime prevention through environmental design, which is a concept that when you're designing areas, you should keep crime prevention in mind. And increased lighting and ensuring the public is able to surveil all areas are items that are of the concept of crime prevention through environmental design. So, we're proposing to, when planning newer, improved public facilities, consider implementing elements of crime prevention through environmental design, and that's how we responded to that In the housing element, there was a comment that financial incentives be listed in our policy for ADUs. So, currently, it read that we should provide for streamlined permitting, education, and adding on to that would be streamlined permitting, education resources, available financial incentives, and monitoring for effectiveness. Larger initiatives, so these have more implications for city budget staffing and achieving, potentially achieving housing growth plan. So, the comment was that we should reference the darkskies.org in our comprehensive plan. Now, this is a very specific organization that has monitoring and annual reporting requirements, more detailed technical requirements, and a requirement that we would host program outreach efforts. So, the comprehensive plan is a general policy document. There is nothing preventing the City Council from adopting exactly darkskies.org as a future date, but we would propose this more generalized language, that of this existing standard, "Adopt lighting standards to prevent light pollution," which is already in the comprehensive plan, "that we add from intruding across property lines and from unshielded lighting creating negative impacts to dark skies at night." And this can be further worked on by the Planning Commission, but a more general requirement, rather than identifying a specific program, may be recommended, as we don't know the impacts yet. And that also lends itself to a topic of explicitly calling out certified local government program. So, certified local government program is a very specific program for historic preservation that the city may choose to adopt in the future, but we don't fully know what impacts that would have to the budget, to staffing, and we have guidance from the Washington State Department of Commerce that identifies historic preservation as a potential barrier to creating housing. A link to that document is provided here. We are not against historic preservation. We are, what's proposed is a more general statement, that we consider appropriate levels of city participation in historic preservation opportunities at the federal, state, and local level, so that the City Council, after more deliberation and study later, can identify what is appropriate for our city. That could very well be certified local government, but that for this general policy document, naming that specific program may not be the best idea. Land use, building heights. We had one comment from an individual council member to reverse the Planning Commission housing strategy for reduced building heights, specifically for the general commercial zone and medium-density residential zones, that the recommendation was to maintain these increased heights along the 303 corridor, but that for the remainder of the city, that they revert back to their existing heights of forty-five feet for general commercial zone and thirty-five feet for the medium-density residential zone. As we've explained previously, that proposed height increases are to promote our housing objectives, that we are badly in need of housing, and that we're raising those to, one, for medium-density, to achieve the existing density, and, two, for general commercial, to take advantage of those construction standards that are more economical. Once again, just to put a picture to the words, the current proposal is to raise the height in the general commercial zone from forty-five feet to sixty-five feet. The current comp plan calls out for five stories of construction to be allowed in the general commercial zone. This would be a modest twenty-foot increase and a one-story increase from what's currently permitted in the comp plan. And a similar story with the medium-density residential zone, which has an existing maximum height of thirty-five feet and a proposed of forty-five, but the existing comp plan calls out that there should be four stories in the medium-density residential zone. So, if anything, in this zone, this is just providing clarity between the existing comp plan and the implementing regulations. And just as a picture, once again, it might help for geographic reasons, the general commercial zone is generally located along the Wheaton Way and Kitsap Way corridors, as shown in there, like a blue turquoise, and the medium-density residential zone, shown there in red, excuse me, in yellow. Next steps are to receive public testimony and direct staff for message to deliver to Planning Commission regarding comprehensive plan, vision, goals, and policies. These are just a synopsis of those items for when council is ready to deliberate. We just have them here in order for maintenance of commercial developments, for housekeeping, Main Street Association, active transportation reference, crime prevention through environmental design, and ADU financing incentives. And then, larger initiative recommendation summaries for the dark skies program establishment. The recommendation is that they establish a broader light pollution policy in the comprehensive plan, and what the City Council decides to do with that later is completely still open. And the same with certified local government establishment, establish a more broad historic preservation policy that can be deliberated later. And for the reduced structure heights that impact housing strategy, those changes aren't recommended.